Agenda, so.
Okay, are we at six o'clock?
Yes, you can, yeah.
Okay. I just got a text from Chief Hoyle, so. He doesn't appreciate us talking smack about it behind his back evidently, so. All right, I think we've got, uh, I think we've got everybody here, right? Let's see, Sabrina, Drew, Paul. We're still waiting for Matt, but why don't we, um, go ahead and call? Let me call the, uh, city council meeting of the city holiday to order. And, uh, force all of you to listen once again to me read the open public meetings of the city of holiday, of the city council of city of holiday. Anchor location declaration, I, Robert Dally, as the mayor of the city of holiday, and the chair of the city council to hereby find and declare as follows. Due to the emergency conditions which currently exist in the state of Utah and specifically in Salt Lake County in the city of holiday as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, the holding of public meetings with an anchor location as defined in the Utah Open and Public Meetings Act presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location and the risk to those who may be present at an anchor location can be substantially mitigated by holding public meetings of the city council pursuant to electronic means that allow for public participation via virtual means and the city has the means and ability to allow virtual participation in the public meetings and in the public meetings in accordance with the Utah Open and Public Meetings Act. Now therefore, based upon the foregoing for 30 days from the date of this order, meetings of the city council of the city of holiday shall be conducted by virtual means without an anchor location dated the 7th day of January 2021. Okay, and, um, I'm not going to go into a big New Year's welcome because most everybody was on the legislative meeting last night, so we'll just move right into the, uh, uh, right to the agenda and go to public comments. Um, we only have one, uh, public hearing this evening, which is a continued public hearing on the proposed holiday crossroad zone, so if there are residents out there that have logged in to address the council on issues related to the holiday crossroad zone, please wait until we continue that public hearing as item number three. Um, with that as a lead in, we will open up just general public comments, so anybody out there in, uh, the chat universe that wishes to address the council with a public comment, uh, please, uh, raise your, kind of your virtual hand and Stephanie will bring you in. State your name and address, uh, for the council and the time will be yours, so anybody, uh, for public comment.
I do not see anybody, we did get that, uh, public comment that, uh, council member Given sent earlier from.
Yeah, it was from a number of, uh, of elementary school students.
Oh.
So we will, we'll include that.
But that, that's really a holiday crossroads zone comment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, no, no public comment.
Okay, being no, there being no public comment, we will close public comment and move to item number three. Now, this is a continued public hearing on, on proposed holiday crossroad zone issues. As a reminder to anybody who may be out there listening in, uh, this is, this is a, a, a big issue for this council, one that we take very seriously because once we vote on this small area master plan, it's, it's going to really guide future development for a pretty critical, uh, area in the city of holiday, so it's not something we take lightly. I don't think we have any intention of closing this public hearing until the council's, um, uh, comfortable that we've received all the public comment and we're satisfied with, uh, bringing the motion to the council. Um, so I, I fully anticipate this public hearing will remain open for at least a couple more council meetings. Um, in large part probably, uh, dependent on how our, our, what I assume will be a pretty long open discussion during the work session next week, the 14th. Um, this will be, you know, made major item for, uh, us to really dig into what's in there and listen to councilman Given's, uh, you know, specific concerns about some things he would like to see addressed and what's been forwarded from the planning commission. Um, so if that is a lead in, I'd like to, to, uh, note for the record that the council has received pretty substantial comment from Mr. Ryan Steele, 4876 South Colony Drive. Um, I believe council all has a copy of that, should have received a copy of that via email. And we also have a, uh, pretty lengthy, um, co- lengthy comment from Brooke Iverson at 2075 East Pheasant Way. So I don't know if they are out there, out there listening, but I just did want to state for the record that we have all received those, uh, written comments and, and knowing my, knowing our council, not my council, sorry about that. Our council, the way I do, I'm sure they've all read through those comments at this point, but you're certainly welcome to address the council, so. Um, and then, uh, Dan, is there, do we need to make any statement about the other, uh, comments that were received? I didn't see those.
Yeah, well, I'm, uh, they were, uh, these were, these were a, a number of, uh, Bonneville uh, middle school students and Oakwood Elementary students who had sent me a kind of a joint letter requesting that in conjunction with holiday crossroads that we see if there could be some sort of neighborhood access path into the neighborhood directly east of, of, uh, of the zone. So I'll, I'll make sure, I, I've sent that along to, uh, Stephanie, I'll make sure we get those attached and circulated for the next meeting, which is a week from today.
Okay. Um, I believe that's all we've received since our last meeting in terms of written comments, so now would be the time for, for residents that are out there that, that wish to, to address the council on the crossroad zone. Again, please raise your hand virtually, Stephanie will bring you in, state your name and address and and try to keep it to three minutes or less if you can, thank you.
Not seeing anyone raising their hand for comments.
I'm going to give it a second longer and just remind everybody now is your time if you want to comment on the crossroad zone, although I'm not going to close this public hearing. So if you want to provide, continue to provide written comment or you want to make public comment, the next opportunity would be 21st of January.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, uh, I can see Ryan Steele is out there. And so I'd just like to say, hey, Ryan, uh, really appreciated your comments, they were very specific. It wasn't just kind of broad strokes, there was very specific and it seemed like there were things that could be specifically looked at and I appreciated that detail. And, uh, I, I'll admit at this point, I haven't had time yet to really dig into it in detail, but I did browse it over and, um, uh, and I appreciated your comments about height. And, um, and so I know you've, you've provided a lot of comment here and, uh, but feel free to, since no one else is raising their hand, if you want to jump in and just give a, a little summary of your feelings and about your email, it'd be welcome.
Hi, Paul, I, I am tuning in, um, but I'm, I'm actually in the midst of, uh, building a, a little toy car with my son, so.
Okay.
Unless you want a, a two-year-old's perspective, I, I think I'll probably stay muted here.
That's, that's fine, I just, I wanted to give you an opportunity since your comments were so detailed and, and thoughtful and, uh, I'd appreciate it.
Appreciate that, Paul, um, I, I think I'll, I'll let the, the written comments stand for themselves, uh, I think the only big thing is just, you know, it is a, it, it's a pretty substantial upzone, um, and I, I think that just leads to some policy questions that should probably be kicked around by the council, and so I'll, I'll defer to you guys on that one.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, if I could just add to, uh, the comment about, about Ryan's submission, what I really appreciated from Ryan's submission is how he laid out side by side the difference between the C2 entitlements and the proposed holiday crossroads entitlements. That was really, really helpful. And his comments on building height and, and also Brooks', uh, Brooke Iverson's were very, very helpful and echo a lot of comments I've received from neighbors, so anyway, thank you, Ryan, particularly and also Brooke for, for your great work in submitting that to the council.
Mayor, I'm not seeing anybody else.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm pretty much talking to myself at this point, I just had a full conversation. Think I'd figure out the, the unmute at this point, um. So, since we don't have this agenda for discussion tonight, I know one thing I'd like to ask Gina to maybe reach out, I don't know if Lanice is on. Um, I don't see her.
She is, Mayor.
Oh, okay, um, the, the one thing I, I think I'm going to be interested to see is to just verify, um, along with the height, you know, we've got the C2 heights, but I'm curious just to, to, uh, be reminded of, of the height we went to on the, on the hotel property, I think it was 53 feet or something, but just to have that available, but also I'm curious to know if we can find it out if it's not too much work, what the height of the building kitty corner to the gas station is where there's an office building there on the corner that's in Murray. And I just, I, I, I just am curious to know as a point of reference in terms of what we're considering in the crossroad zone and what's around there, um, I, I just want to know what that, that is if possible. The, the, I know the hotel's easy because it is what it is and I, I think it's 47 feet and then it can go up to 53 feet for 40, 40% of the building or something like that, but I just want to know for sure what that height is along Highland Drive and then I'd be curious to know from a perspective standpoint, the height of that office building on uh, 5900 South and Van Winkle, um, there's a, a recruiting, RX recruiting or something's in there, but it's like a four or five-story building and I'd like to know what that height is, if possible.
I will definitely find that information out for you, Mayor.
I was gonna say, Mayor, we do have Rob Hobbs and Paul already also available if you, if you want.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to get into the actual discussion. You know, I don't want to have a debate about the zone right now because we really don't have an agenda, but since they are on the call, I, I would, and we're not going to discuss it in the work session. Are there, is there anybody else on the council that, that would want to see anything specific in terms of, you know, that discussion we're going to have next week that, that staff could, could work on between now and then?
In addition to, if we're looking at heights across the street in Murray, you should probably look at the IHC building too, I can't remember how tall that is because that'd be across the street from the south end, you know, across the street from the hotel.
Yeah, and then, and then in addition to the height, the, the setback, the front setback for those buildings would be helpful too because the, uh, the HCR has, has a zero front setback the way it's drafted right now, and I know those, those buildings are definitely not zero, particularly the office building on the corner of Vine Street and Van Winkle, uh, is definitely not zero.
Yeah, I would just say as, as we start to look at that, if there's, if there are any questions you have, I would encourage you to shoot those to, to Paul and Lanice and his ever, you know, at this point Gina, whoever we should send that to. Um, it, it may help make the discussion next week a little bit more efficient if they are prepared with those answers when we show up next week.
And this is one of those assignments that Paul will be continuing on with, um, so I'd encourage you to send it to both Paul and Lanice.
Okay, um, so here's a technical issue, is that email set up now, should we use? Is that an active email at this point?
It is.
Okay. And is it L. Davenport at City of Holiday?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Well, thank you, and since we don't have, and I assume we still have no comment, uh, public comment, um, we are going to continue that public hearing and continue to encourage residents to either provide written or, um, public comment, um, until we bring this to a vote. Um, so we'll move to item number four then, this is Resolution 2021 dash 01. This is the city manager's emergency declaration, um, which, uh, essentially uh, takes us from January 1st to June 30th, I believe, Gina, do you want to? Is there anything you want to say about this, or I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, uh, so this is a, a yet another extension of the emergency declaration for the pandemic. Fingers crossed, this is the last one that takes us through June 30th, um, and I, I am hopeful that by that time, um, most of our residents will be vaccinated and, uh, we won't have to continue it again.
Um, I do have, I do have a quick question if the council doesn't have any other questions, um, and it's only then in the extension of emergency declaration, there's a reference to exhibit A. Um, attached here to is exhibit A incorporated herein by reference or hereby extended to date. And I did not see an exhibit A, I don't know what's on exhibit A.
Mayor?
Yeah.
We'll have that attached when you sign, exhibit A is Gina's original emergency declaration and the two addenda that were issued in conjunction with that. It's the same exhibit A that was attached to the last extension the council entered in Gina June last year or July?
I, July, I believe.
Okay.
Trying to check. And we don't have a date, sorry.
But it's that, it's that same declaration that, or order that Gina issued with the two addenda.
Okay, I'm just, so what did the addenda, I mean, what's?
One related to, um, Gina, help me, one was a business licensing extension?
It was, and one was permitting, um, we had, we allowed folks not to pay their business license, um, that was due and extended that to June 30th. And then we allowed some signage for, um, takeout.
Yeah.
Um, I also threw June 30th.
So that will, it, it's, will this declaration extend those, um, exceptions, I mean, so now we'll?
You, you already took care of the business licensing part of it. And that's attached just for, for, I guess I would call it information in reference. The business license extension is no longer active. The signage extension, as I understand it, still is.
I, and Todd will have to check, but I believe it expired in September.
You think the signage one did also?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I mean, not to, not to drag this out, but I, I get the business license thing, but I, I would cer- I guess my question is, can businesses still, particularly restaurants, still continue? You know, that kind of outdoor si- it's like the sandwich board signage, right? It gives them more flexibility in terms of, I mean, I would hate to, I hope that would still be allowed until we get to a point where they can resume normal operations, I wouldn't want to do anything that would hinder businesses' ability to be nimble in dealing with this pandemic, so that's a question I have, I, I don't know if we can address that in the motion, or do we have to come back and, and put in a new, you know, approve a new addenda for that? Does anybody else feel strongly or am I just like overthinking that?
I, I agree with you very much, Mr. Mayor, because I, certainly with the restaurants and the signage and the takeout, all that stuff is still quite valid. And so if there is an expiration date that has passed, uh, I, I'd like to extend that, I, um, I, I'm a little less concerned about the business license thing just because there hasn't been that, as big a hit as we thought there would be except for certain types of businesses. But, uh, I think certainly the restaurant takeout, that's still as valid as ever.
Yeah.
I, I, I agree with that.
I do too.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I, Gina, Gina, I'm not overly concerned about it because I don't think it's something we're enforcing and, but if you and Todd look at that, if you think it's something we need to take care of in a future council meeting, I would certainly support that. If, if it indeed has expired, um, I would like to make sure that we're not going to be out en- enforcing those kinds of things on businesses that are just trying to survive for the next few months.
Mayor?
Yeah.
If in the motion the council specifies that it's the intent that the re- the relaxed standards on outdoor dining and signage as they were, uh, enacted previously be extended consistent with the date of this declaration, but that the business licensing not, then we can make that, you know, we can draw this, uh, extension to be effective that way.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that if you're comfortable with it.
I am.
If somebody wants to take a stab at that motion.
With that, I'd move approved resolution, uh, move to approve resolution 2021 dash 01, further extending the city manager's emergency declaration and all associated addenda, including an extension of the, uh, restaurant-related signage and accommodation. Does that work?
Yeah.
Second, second.
Okay, motion is second by council member Peterson, um. Let's see, I think we're going to need a roll call on this one, council member Given?
Yes.
Council member Peterson?
Yes.
Council member Fatheringham?
Yes.
Council member Quinn?
Yes.
Council member Durham?
Yes.
And Chair Bone Chest, so that resolution is approved with, um, that addendum to it as well, so thank you. Um, item number five is a UPD mental health update, and we've got Lieutenant Ackerman on here, but we've actually got our own chief, Chief Hoyle on the line, so we're going to pull chief in and then he's going to drop off after he gives us an update, so Chief Hoyle?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, members of the council, Gina, uh, thank you for this opportunity, uh, what, uh, we wanted to kind of do tonight. And Stephanie, if you don't mind, could you add, uh, Michael Archibec to this? Uh, Michael Archibec, uh, he is our, uh, mental health unit detective, uh, here at UPD and he's going to kind of talk to you a little bit more about this, but uh, one of the biggest issues that you all know and, and hear about so commonly is, uh, that we face in, uh, law enforcement are mental health issues, uh, people struggling with mental health, uh, disabilities and, and how do we help and, and work with these individuals? One of the things that I think we're kind of at the forefront of, uh, UPD is in our mental health, uh, response to these types of crises that people are going through. We actually have a mental health unit, uh, that, uh, Mike's going to talk to you a little bit about the unit. Uh, it's one of those regional services that we have, um, that they actually go around to all the different precincts, uh, maintain a queue of people who are struggling with mental health issues and how they can help them. And I'm going to let, I, I don't want to steal any of, uh, Archie's thunder here, I'm going to let him take it over and, and kind of talk about what they do, uh, who's in the unit and, and kind of why we're at the forefront of, of responding to mental health unit, uh, so Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Chief, I appreciate this, uh, opportunity, uh, Mayor, uh, city council members. As, uh, Chief Hoyle stated, I'm, uh, Michael Archibec, um, I'm part of the mental health unit with Unified Police. Um, the mental health unit was started, uh, by Sergeant Jody Sampson about three and a half years ago. The mental health unit falls under the Investigation Division, which is under the headquarters at Unified, um, part of the pooled resources which is available to all the, um, um, precincts under, um, Unified Police, so all the communities, uh, uh, under Unified. Under that, um, we have Sergeant Sampson, who's the, the unit leader, myself, who's the full-time detective, and then we have a, uh, social worker, uh, Ken Martinez, who is a employee of the University of Utah under the, the, uh, Mobile Crisis Team. We have him under a grant through the county, the Salt Lake County, uh, um, for two years. He was previously on a grant for two years, we just had that renewed for another two years. Um, he's a great, uh, resource because he was working, uh, with NCOD before, yeah, he was there with the, as a supervisor and he's been, um, uh, an incredible, um, resource. What we do, what we brought him in to do is be a, uh, co-responding model, so myself and, uh, Ken are out in the community, we're out there available as we get these calls for service of, uh, of people in crisis. Whether they're just in a, in a momentary, uh, uh, state of crisis, uh, because they're not able to handle a situation in their, in their life, or whether they're, they have a chronic mental illness that they're not able to, uh, take care of at the time or families are at their wits' end and they need assistance. Um, or, or the, the extreme cases where people are at that point where they do want to take their lives. Um, if we're available, we go out there as a co-responding model. Now unfortunately, because our resources are limited, we can't be everywhere, we can't be in each one of the communities at once. Um, uh, we do what we can, um, we have, uh, a secondary, uh, assignment, uh, to the, each one of the precincts, so in Holiday, um, you have, uh, Detective Arlen Bennett who, uh, is assigned to the mental health unit, uh, so once a month he goes out with, uh, Ken Martinez and does that co-responding model. So he goes in and meets with those individuals in Holiday specifically and checks on them, um, those high utilizers, uh, of those calls for service and checks on them, we do that follow-up of seeing how those individuals that called 911, called in that time of need um, and see how those individuals are doing. Um, just to put it into a little bit of perspective, uh, just in the last seven days of this calendar year, um, UPD-wide, we've already had over 30 crisis calls, so specific, um, two crisis calls, we've had 30 uh, in the UPD jurisdictions that we, or communities that we serve. Um, so again, with the, with the resources that we have, that's what we have going on, um. Uh, we're trying to expand, we're working with, uh, uh, state agencies, we do a monthly, uh, uh, roundtable, so we bring in state agencies, adult protective services, uh, DCFS. Uh, we work with the, the hospitals in Highland Ridge, some of the specific, uh, two mental health, uh, hospitals and facilities. We, we try to, uh, we, we work with all the resources we can, we can't, we can't do this alone. Um, this just isn't a law enforcement, uh, issue, this isn't just the, the hospital's, uh, responsibility. And so that's why we're trying to bring all these stakeholders and different players in as we can. Um, COVID kind of put us behind, um, uh, it had also compounded the issue, so that's part of, uh, uh, what's going on with the calls for service. Um, again, we have everything from the, you know, the, the simple constant callers of, of, I'm, I'm seeing, I'm hearing things to those individuals where they're vulnerable adults, um, they have these mental illnesses since they were children, but yet now they're adults, uh, trying to function as adults and they can't, we're working with APS to try to get them into resources, um, that's very time-consuming. Um, and it's, it's unified wide, it's not just, uh, Kern's, it's just not Magnet, it's not Holiday. It's all over and so it is very, uh, timer, uh, intensive. Um, so wi- with that, I know I went over a lot of information real quick, um, I don't want to spend a lot of time, uh, of your council meeting, but I want to, uh, facilitate your questions on, uh, anything that I've, uh, discussed. Um, and then if you want to know anything about the, more about the program.
Hey, we'll open it up to the council. Anybody have any questions?
I don't really have a question, I think it's a, um, great service to our law enforcement, which is an incredibly, um, I have a brother that spent 30 years in vice in San Francisco and I know the stress that he was under and it was, you know, affected the family, so I think it's a wonderful thing to provide to our, um, to those that serve us so well, so thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate the support and, um, you know, Chief Hoyle is a, a great supporter of the, the mental health unit. Um, he gives us the, the time and like I said with, uh, Detective Bennett, uh, given that resource that we have specifically from your, uh, precinct, um, it, it's needed, so we, we appreciate that.
One thing if I might, uh, interject too, these guys do a phenomenal job and they have uh, probably one of the largest caseloads of a single unit in, in the organization and this is uh, overseen by, as Detective Archibec mentioned, it's, it's a sergeant, a detective and then, uh, a social worker, uh, but last, and I usually provide you guys on the monthly statistics, uh, what their stats are and, and last month they were pushing about 550 cases that they're actively working and we, we generally in Holiday, I mean, it varies, uh, but we usually see anywhere from 25 to 50 new cases a month of, of mental health cases that these guys are taking on and and following up on, uh, so they, they carry a tremendous load, but do a tremendous job at getting people resources and getting them help, um, so that they're not a, a continual call that we keep having to go on, so they can get the help they need. having to go on, so they can get the help they need, and they do a phenomenal job with it.
Yeah, I agree. Well, thank you so much for, uh, taking some time to log on and talk to our council about, uh, another asset in the pooled services or shared services that we have available to us as members of the Unified, uh, family. So thank you.
Thank you for your support. Appreciate it.
Hey, Chief Hoyle?
Yes, sir.
Could, could I, could I hold you for just another maybe five minutes?
Absolutely.
I know, I know you've got to get going, but I thought I would, um, just pull item E off of the work session, which is the, uh, uh, pardon me, item F, which is the Back's the Blue. We're just gonna have a quick discussion on that. And I, since, since you're here, you know, I think, uh, the council, I sent you, I had Selena just send a little bullet list of some of the things we're working on for the Back the Blue event next week. Um, this is, uh, our, you know, kind of how we decided we wanted to honor the fifth anniversary of Doug's, you know, tragic shooting death that occurred on January seventeenth. This will be the five-year anniversary a week from Sunday. And, um, you know, obviously with COVID, it, it creates some challenges for us, but we didn't wanna, like many of the things we're doing, we just didn't wanna give up on, on, uh, the event. And so this is what we came up with. Um, I'm not gonna go over everything, but I sent everybody kind of a bulleted list of just some things we're doing. Um, I know we've got a Zoom call tomorrow morning with Selena at eight-thirty, who is ever gonna log on to that. I'm not sure, Chief, but, um, uh, to just to kind of go over some things, but you'll see, uh, banners, uh, Chief Hoyle had, uh, photos of all our officers. I made them dress up in their Class A uniforms, which I'm not sure if they like that or not. But they got, uh, we've got photos of our officers that you'll see posted up on our light poles in the village. There's gonna be some things in businesses. Um, we'll go over it a little bit more tomorrow. I know there's some, I, I don't know if there's some specific things, Chief, that we should be looking for that you're aware of, that maybe I'm not in terms of write-alongs and stuff?
Yeah, actually, uh, what we're gonna do, there's a couple of, of neat things that we wanna really highlight. So first and foremost, um, we're gonna post, because next Sunday on the seventeenth is the actual anniversary, if you will, of Doug's death. Uh, Selena's doing a great job putting together kind of a tribute video that will air live on, um, uh, Facebook Live at seven-thirty on Sunday. Um, and so that will kind of honor his memory that way on Sunday. And then a couple of times next week on Tuesday and on Thursday at four o'clock, we're doing a, a virtual write-along. That's what I just got done, we just got done filming with Selena here just a little bit ago. It'll actually be kind of fun. It'll be interactive, uh, for some of the kids, uh, to participate in. It'll be on Zoom, a- and they can see kind of some of the things that we do in law enforcement on there and then do a live kind of question and answers. We're moving through it so they can kind of get an idea of what we're doing. It'll, it'll be a lot of fun and interactive for the kids. So that's a couple of other deals, along with a coloring contest at the schools. Um, there's been a lot of work that's been put into this, a- and it'll be a good activity and opportunity for us to engage with the community and, and work together with them.
Yeah, I know Michelle's gonna have some banner she's gonna put up. I'm hoping she'll put one right up in front of the precinct, but, um, you know, the count, those that are active on social media of our council members, um, if, if you see something coming out on Facebook or you wanna share something from the city, we just kind of wanna get the word out that this is our week to say thank you to all of our police officers, um, the good work you do on behalf of our community and, and do it in memory of, uh, the five-year anniversary of, of Doug's death. So, um, you know, be looking for it. And Selena's done a great job. The chief's put a lot of time into it and, and, you know, more than anything, encourage your fellow residents, if they see a, one of our officers, to give them a wave or a honk and, and say thanks for your service to the city. So, uh, anyway, Chief, I wanted to handle that now before you, before you log off and head back home. So.
Thank you so much. We appreciate every support in this. Uh, it's, it's truly an honor for us. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Chief. We'll see ya.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Oh, hey, Chief, one more thing. I'm sorry to drag this out, but, um, I need to, you know, I need to thank, um, Chief Mazeron and also Lieutenant Ackerman. Um, we had, you know, with, with the things that were happening yesterday, we had some concerns with, um, uh, you know, I'll just say it, Senator Romney's residence and, um, and th- they, you know, Gina and I had some, some concerns about that, and they were very quick to react and help us out and work with the state to make sure that, um, everything, y- you know, that, that, that family felt safe where they were yesterday. And they just, you know, it just makes me appreciate being part of the Unified Police Community when you can call up and, and it's kind of all hands on deck when you need it. So, um, just thank both of them for me, if you would.
I will definitely do that. They both did a phenomenal job with that. Lieutenant Ackerman's really helped me out a bunch this last little bit while I've been out, but, uh, I appreciate that and I'll certainly pass it along. Thank you.
Okay, all the best to you and your family.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Council. Sorry to, uh, get off the agenda there a little bit, but I just wanted to, to handle that with the chief before he got, he got out of here. Um, all right, that moves us on to item number six with the, which is the consent agenda. This, these are minutes from the November fifth, nineteenth, and December third, which I'm sure everybody's had a chance to go through. So before we take a vote on the consent agenda, any comments or edits that you would like to pass along before we take a vote?
Uh, I, I'd just like to note that this batch of minutes I thought was quite thorough and excellent. So, uh, I don't know if, uh, we, we've got a new minute writer, or if it was, uh, one of the old vets who came back or something, but I thought it was, I thought these are high-quality minutes. So thanks, whoever prepared those.
Stephanie, pass that along. Somebody got an attaboy. Then you can make the motion, Paul.
Uh, I would, uh, move to approve, uh, the consent agenda minutes for November fifth, nineteenth, and December third.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Uh, consent agenda's approved unanimously. Uh, item number seven is our city manager, Gina.
Thank you. I have just a few updates for the council, uh, this evening. Um, first, I wanna give you a brief update on, uh, transition in community and economic development. Um, as of January fourth, Lenise has bec- begun work with us, um, as the city's new community and economic development director, and John has assumed responsibilities as the planning manager, and Paul has transitioned to his senior planning advisor role. Um, Paul will be completing a number of projects that are ongoing, including the Holiday Crossroad Zone, um, and the Canal Trail Study, which we anticipate having in front of the council in the next couple of months. Lenise's first task is going to be to become acquainted with our city staff, our existing coordinances and plans, and of course with you all. So I would expect to hear from her in the next couple of weeks, um, about setting up some individual conversations with you about your thoughts and priorities. Um, we have also, with your permission, hired our building official internally, and he began work as a city employee on December twenty-eighth. Our business license official has resigned. Um, we have a vacancy in that position, and so that is really allowing us a chance to evaluate workflow and process in the department, and that's really gonna be a priority over the next few weeks. Um, as we began advertising for that position, we have added, um, small business support to that job description. So I think that's another function that we, we haven't been able to focus on in the past, which I'm hopeful that, um, a new employee in that position, uh, will have the time to do, um, you know, approximately five to eight hours a week. So that's my update on planning. Any questions on that process before we move on? Okay. Um, wanted to let you know that, um, in response to your direction earlier this fall, uh, we have begun this week re-engaging the public on the Holiday at Twenty work that was completed just before the pandemic began, uh, in March. Uh, the Holiday at Twenty website now includes videos explaining, um, the need and, and offering some explanation of how property taxes are calculated as well. And we're planning a more comprehensive discussion with you about what happens next at your next council meeting on the fourteenth. Wanted to pass along some good news. Um, earlier last summer, both council member Quinn and council member Gibbons identified some sidewalk, walk, fill-in work that was needed around Cottonwood Elementary. Um, staff applied for a grant, and while we don't have formal approval yet, uh, we anticipate that that request is going to be funded. It's gonna be funded out of a pot that would, um, have us complete that work by this time next year, the first of next year. So, um, we're really hopeful that we'll be able to get it completed before school starts in the fall. Uh, the grant does require a local match, and, um, I'm anticipating it would be able to cover that match out of, partially out of this year's, um, sidewalk funds and partially assuming that, that you approve a budget that continues those sidewalk funds out of next year as well. I'll keep you updated when we receive formal notification, um, as we look more at project design. And, uh, finally, I just wanted to give you a brief legislative update. Um, for those of you that were, uh, able to participate in the legislative meeting yesterday, I know you're aware of, um, SB sixty-one, which would allow the conversion of existing billboards into electronic billboards. Um, for our new council members, we were said, somehow able to get through last session without talking about billboards. Um, but I want, because this has been such a big issue for Holiday in the past, I just wanted to raise it tonight. Um, in the past, we've taken a pretty strong position, um, against billboards. We have an ordinance that prohibits expansion, um, beyond the billboards that we have. Uh, SB sixty-one would allow conversion of existing billboards into electronic billboards. Um, so we have an ordinance that prohibits new billboards, and we also have an ordinance that prohibits electronic signs. My assumption is that this council will continue to oppose billboards and oppose electronic signs, uh, but wanted to get some direction from you, um, since we haven't had that conversation in the past.
Um, absolutely. For me, a hundred percent.
Same here.
Yeah, same here.
Yeah, I like the fact that we're not littered with billboards all over the city. So I agree.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, and so that is the message we will convey to the league and to our lobbyist team. Um, and that is all I have.
Gina, I just have a quick question. Um, and it, it relates to the Holiday at Twenty. And, um, I'm just thinking that, you know, I've already got one question that has been posed to me that I'm gonna speak with a constituent about Monday, but I know that Holly has, uh, posted, um, you know, kind of a, a, one of our first articles, Holiday's future depends on all the city council to consider property tax increase, which is in this, uh, version of, of the Holiday Journal. So this really is kind of launching, um, the fact that we are going to be reaching out to our community and going through this process, I guess. And my question is, do we need, um, as a council, and I'm, I'm kind of asking the council, there's a lot of underlying information here, um, that we're gonna eventually need to access. And I'm wondering if, and maybe Holly's, Holly's probably already done this, and I'm wasting everybody's time, but if we need to have part of a session where we go through the tools that are on the website and places we can reference residents to or reference ourselves to as we go through this, um, and, and, and we get residents starting to reach out to us with questions and, um, you know, better equip us to be able to use the information we already have. Is there anybody else that, that would be curious about maybe seeing if we could do some kind of a little training, inner council training in terms of what's on the website, what tools we have out there and, uh, educate ourselves a little bit more, or if Holly's on, maybe she's already, you know, got that. I'm not sure. Now this, 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 this ad has landed. I think we're gonna start hearing from our residents.
And Mayor, our intention was to share, um, a lot of that information as well as a pro- outline a process going forward next week. If there's something that specifically that you'd like to see us address, we're happy to include that. I, and by we, I, I of course mean Holly is happy to include that.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I probably ahead of myself here, so maybe I'll just let it start to unfold a little bit and then just let the council know if we get to a point where you feel like you need more, you know, there's all sorts of stuff out there for you when you want it. And we'll just kind of let the process. I know she's got a big timeline set up, and we'll just kind of let her, her go through that. And I'm just starting to think now that we're gonna start hearing from our residents once these articles start landing. Any other questions for Gina? Okay, let's, uh, let's start with our council, uh, district reports, and we'll start with, uh, with Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just one item. As you all know, there have been concerns for a long time about pedestrian versus cars on Wander Lane. And I want to let you know that Jared has, um, forwarded to me a completed traffic, uh, engineer study. Appreciate his help. There, there was nothing surprising in the study. Basically, the three options are either leave it like it is, uh, restrict parking on one side, which is what we had talked to, to residents about last summer and early fall, and gotten quite strong reactions to. The third option is a one-way system where Russell Street and Wander Lane are one-way in opposite directions. Um, I have sent this study to a couple residents on, um, Wander and also one friend of mine who lives on Russell Street. They promised to look at it, uh, talk with their neighbors and get back to me. So this is certainly going to be something that will continue to go into the spring. Gina, is there anything you want to add on that? You've been involved in this process.
You're muted. The only thing that I would add, um, is that, uh, one of our conversation, um, points was, um, whether to make this transition, uh, if we were to go in that direction without some opportunity for in-person public engagement. So
Yes.
Um, knowing that we hopefully would be able to resume public meetings, um, later in the spring, early summer. Um, I, I believe your direction was to, that, that would probably, um, reach out to residents in that time period.
Right. And also, I, I want to, I, I have assured everyone, I have talked about on this issue, that the city is not going to make a decision without very much, um, residential input. And I think that's obviously going to be a very big part of, of what happens. So yes, when I talked with Gina earlier, we said, we, uh, talked about maybe in May or so, when hopefully more people are vaccinated and the weather is better, have possibly an outdoor discussion and invite everyone along i- in that neighborhood to, to give us input. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Drew. Matt?
Just a couple of things. Um, I met today with the tree committee. Um, there was sort of a love fest over Paul Allred and how much they're gonna miss him and how, um, what a good supporter he's been of, of trees in Holiday. And, um, I wanted to pass that on. And then they're also very anxious to meet Lenise, um, at some point when it makes sense. And so Lenise, maybe we can get, just get in touch with each other and talk about when that might make sense. And then I had a, a contact from a constituent this week, um, about the, the intersections in the village, Holiday Boulevard and Murray Holiday Road and, um, twenty thirty East and, uh, is the Laney Avenue. Um, and I, I'm assuming that there's maybe- And I, I'm assuming that there's maybe history there that I don't know about and just wanted to know who I could talk to, maybe so that I could get those questions answered and, and get back to the constituent. The the proposal the constituent has is, is roundabouts, which sounds like kind of a big undertaking, but I'd be happy to sort of get some history on the planning there. Gina, do you have a suggestion?
That is a, the roundabout idea definitely would have preceded me. It looks like council member Peterson might have some thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, I, I definitely, and I think Paul, Paul Allred has been around during all those discussions, but they were lengthy discussions that we have had, Matt. And it is, it's a square footage issue.
That's kind of what I thought.
Yeah, there is absolutely not the square footage and still maintain some type of a, we would have had to give up the plaza or one of the corners. You can also and Paul or John would be able to direct you and probably send you the link of the traffic study that was done regarding, regarding the roundabouts up in that area, but that would definitely be Paul and John. But it really boils down to square footage. They take up quite a bit of, of land and we just did not have them at any of those. We're a built-out city, so. They'd be wonderful if we could pull them off.
And then the final thing I think is also a historical favorite, raccoons. I keep getting questions from constituents about raccoons and why we're no longer participating in the raccoon program. And I've talked to Gina about that and I think I understand that, but I just raised that in case others are also hearing from their constituents on that topic and whether that's something to think about revisiting.
Echoes of Pawnee, Indiana.
What's up?
Did you hear from Clay Anderson?
I don't think that's, at least not the most recent one.
Okay. I'm sorry, I interrupted.
And I apologize as well. I have just a short bit of additional information from Salt Lake County. We had a resident contact Salt Lake County Animal Services directly. And in the process of that conversation about raccoons, discovered that they also have not been able to find out additional information about how often the service was utilized in our community. However, Holly sits on a board and a representative from USDA that had provided that services will be at their next board meeting because other cities are still participating in that contract. And I believe the idea is that they'll talk about how to obtain some data going forward. So it may be something that the council wants to explore in the future, but to this point, we, we still haven't resolved that question from the budget two years ago. How often are these services used and who is receiving them?
Yeah, I mean, I can add real quick to that. It used to be that that was a service provided by animal services across the board and then they, it was an FTE that they did away with. And then there were a few of us that thought it was important and we funded that ourselves and we were part of that. I think it was five or seven thousand dollars a year or something, Jean, I can't remember. But we just couldn't find any data that showed that we even, even though we know we got a raccoon problem, it was our feeling that nobody was using it. And so that, that's really where it came from. And so it's really become one of the issues like other issues, say like rats, where it's the individual property owner's responsibility to mitigate the issue through private means. But we could look at it again if there's enough interest, I guess. But I think it was just that, Gina, it was that we just couldn't justify the cost anymore because we couldn't verify that anybody was even using the service.
Okay, that's all from me.
Paul?
As a side note, Matt, when I had raccoons at my house briefly, we were advised that raccoons, they tend to stick to their same walking paths to get to their specific tree latrines. And if you can determine their walking path and put cayenne pepper on that walking path, they won't come back. Burns their little paws and we did that and off they went, so.
I'm gonna have all my constituents call you, Paul.
Hey, I just gave you that tipsy good pass. Anyway, okay. Anyway, I don't have anything specific for the district, but I did wanna just give some focus to a couple of the things that, that stood out to me in the legislative meeting we had the other day. The big thing that stood out to me was it seems like there was an opportunity for acquiring some one-time transportation dollars. Did you get that same mess? They got like a billion bucks they don't know what to do with? And I'm like, boy, we should be identifying opportunities because any opportunity we can grab that money for, then our own money can go to the city streets that the, the state is unwilling to touch. But if there's roads that we own that the state's interested in, the, you know, the Highland Drives and et cetera, boy, let's see if we can identify some opportunities because we'd love to get a chunk of that change. And and let's see, regarding the, yeah, that was addition to the billboards, which I thought was interesting. And also the, I'll be interested to, to track that ADU legislation. To see how, and then we'll have to figure out, you know, how to adapt to what's coming down the pipe there. The, the last thing that it was, it was district-specific. Rob, a certain golf pro that you're familiar with at the local club, who's in my district, lives in my district on Kings Row. He was I guess he grew up in the Harvard Yale area and he loves the, the street lighting they have up there. And so he was trying to promote perhaps a long-term view of Kings Row having that sort of Harvard Yale street lighting. I, I'm not, I'm not too excited about that myself. But it's an idea that he was trying to propose. I mean, I've got concerns about, you know, the dark sky issues and, and and just in terms of priority, we've got, you know, this whole property tax thing isn't for decorative lighting, it's rather just to fix our critical infrastructure. But anyway, I, I thought I just passed that along that there, I do have a constituent that's interested in that, sort of a long-term. And it's something to be discussed. I'm not necessarily supportive of it.
Paul?
Yeah.
I moved from roughly that area several years ago and I know that for most of the neighborhoods that were putting that in, it was a program where the, the residents got together and funded the streetlights themselves.
Oh, like a special service district?
Yeah, there may have been some participation by the city, but it, but I remember when it was happening in my neighborhood, it was something that residents got together and, and worked out.
That's good to know. You, you bring up a good point because I know we've talked about this for years about figuring out like a packet of some sort when these sorts of things come from our constituents that would be for, that would be more prescriptive to do a special service district than a general, you know, funding. We've talked about like someone wants to get their road redone in a certain way or get their sidewalks and curb and gutter done, that, that maybe it's a special service district instead of a general fund thing, as we've talked about. And Gina, have we made any progress on that sort of the special service district education packet that I mean, it's kind of a hard nut to, to get because there has to be pretty much a hundred percent or a very high percentage of approval by the affected residents. Isn't that right, Gina?
That's exactly right. And the other challenge is the administrative capacity of our, our staff. And so I believe the direction of the council to this point has been not to, that is not something we would offer as an option. If that's, has changed.
I, I couldn't remember if it was, I, I knew that was not something we, we would promote. I couldn't remember though if there was like a an educational sort of packet we were gonna prepare that if a citizen wants to pursue it themselves, this is the process you would go through. And guess what? Pretty high hurdles.
Once upon a time in, in that part of Salt Lake City, they were doing, there was a grant match program or some type of a match program where residents would agree to X and electric, you know, so they were, a lot of them were kind of, I mean, it was back in like the eighties, so it's just not something they do anymore.
In addition, Salt Lake City also levies a streetlight fee. As a utility. So yeah, there are three, three other mechanisms that create funding streams that are not available in holiday.
Here's, I think I've got a good response for him. Then it would be, okay, here's what your option is. It's a special service district, but you'd have to get the support of all the residents who would have to pay the fee. A streetlight fee to construct and, and that's gonna be a high hurdle, so.
There's nothing to stop a private resident from putting a light towards the front of their, you know, as long as it's not in the city easement. I mean, anybody can.
Yeah, I, I think that's not necessarily what he was after, is more like.
I know, but I mean, you know, groups could get together and residents on, I mean, I could do it on my street where every other, you know, five or six residents, but.
Yeah, his, his argument was that it's just very highly trafficked with walking traffic and blah, blah, blah. But yeah, I, I get it, Tom. That's all I have.
Sabrina?
District one's been pretty quiet, so I don't really have anything in the district. I'm sure most of you already know, but I'm going to pass along for those of you that don't, and I'm not sure, I meant to connect with Gina with you on this. Mr. Bershon's wife passed away over the holidays. So I'm sure everybody is aware of that. I'm not sure if they are or not. I didn't know if we as a city wanted to send a card or something to him. She had chronic illness. But I'm sure you saw that several of the Olympus community, and Matt, you might know what the tally is up to now. Created a GoFundMe account for him. You know, for he and his children, because he is now going to be a single father to several children and is dealing with childcare and in order to keep him as our principal and still allow him to be able to hire the services that he needs and gosh, I mean, they raised like twenty-five thousand dollars in just a couple of days and I think their goal was a hundred. Matt, do you know what they're up to yet?
I don't.
I mean, they're, I'm sure they're, I mean, this was before Christmas, so I'm sure they're there. But anyway, just in dealing with him as a parent also as kind of liaison for the city with the community council there. Eric serves in the community council, so we interact with him quite a bit and it's been really devastating. So I think their youngest is five years old. So anyway, just if you see him, just pass along your condolences and appreciation for what he does and what he does for our community. He's a fantastic principal here within our, our community and, and really has, I think, tried to unite the, the city and Olympus High School.
Okay, thanks Sabrina. I'm Dan.
Couple of things. Historical commission has, has identified a, a grand opportunity with Utah State Historic Preservation. It's a, it's a local government grant that could be up to ten thousand dollars, but it's project-specific. I've interacted a little bit with Gina about it. It, it sounds like we need to tie it to a specific project. She's given couple of suggestions and I've just sent it back to the commission to see if, you know, if they want to come up with some kind of proposal, but it is a fifty-fifty match. And the, and the grant application is due in February, February twelfth, I think. But anyway, I, just, just a little heads up on that, but it is some money that we could get. Also, just a, just sort of a, an update for the council and then a, just a reminder to Gina and, and staff about the Rockworth gravel pit development. Mayor Dally and I monitored the Cottonwood Heights City Council work session a couple of days ago where, where they sort of their council went through this. And, and they're, they're continuing to work on this. This is of course a big issue for, for the east end of my district, Canyon Cove neighborhood. I have a lot of neighbors up there that I've been interacting with who were very concerned about this. What it would do is it would, it would, it would build a large you know, mixed-use development just over the border in Cottonwood Heights, the corner of the old Wasatch Boulevard and Skate Road one oh nine, which goes up to Big Cottonwood Canyon. And the, the, the big issue, the biggest issue is that they're proposing to put a new intersection on the old Wasatch Boulevard, kind of across the road, street from the park and ride, which would include stop signs, stopping traffic southbound on, on, just over our border, just almost exactly where the border is on Wasatch Boulevard southbound. So we had the, the mayor and I and Gina and, and Paul and Jared and Dr. Perrin and I had a, had a really productive meeting in November with Mayor Peterson and Tim Tingey, the Cottonwood Heights City Manager and their staff about this. And one of, one of the commitments, Mayor Peterson, one of the commitments he made was that he wanted, he wanted to assure Holliday and assure our council that they wanted to make sure that we were comfortable with, with this sort of the traffic and access issue on Wasatch Boulevard. And, and said that, that he wanted, he, he was sure their council would be sensitive to kind of a palatable sort of transition, traffic transition between the cities. And so just a reminder, Gina, the they had committed that they were gonna study Dr. Perrin's, we had Dr. Perrin do kind of a traffic study for us and and they were, they were, they had committed, they were gonna study Dr. Perrin's recommendations and then Tim was gonna circle back, Gina, I think with you in January. I think that was the, the commitment to let the staff sort of share information. Anyway, just wanted to, to remind, this is not gonna be, this will next be taken up in a continued hearing status by Cottonwood Heights City Council in February. But anyway, I just wanted to remind Gina that Tim is supposed to be getting with you and, and I, and probably Lenise and, and Paul and you know, and Mike Johnson, their planner, I'm sure they're gonna, they're, they're wanting to share stuff as well. So anyway, I just wanted to remind you that that is probably pretty crucial that we, that we circle back with them.
And thanks for that reminder. My understanding is that Dr. Perrin has met with both the developer and engineering staff in Cottonwood Heights. And, and they were very receptive to the options that he proposed. Tim and I were actually scheduled to meet this morning and a conflict arose, so we've rescheduled it for next Thursday. And hopefully I'll be able to have an update then.
Great. That, that's all I have. Just, that was just kind of, just a reminder where we were and update for the council. So that's all I have, Mayor.
You know, as part of mine, thanks Dan. My kind of understanding was that their approval process really on this zone is, is they actually approve the development, like not just the zone, but you gotta show us what you're gonna build and we'll decide whether we want you to build it or not. Do we, are we gonna have, I assume we'll have an opportunity to provide public comment at certain points as this moves along? Continue to, to weigh in with them as they go along? Oh, you're muted, Dan.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly right. And in fact, in fact, Lori Kadada and I have been talking at length this week about she has a lot of residents who want to comment and, and she and I have sort of agreed that rather than have just one generic you know, sort of comment, that there's a number of comments will be made and, and so she's, she's gonna, she's gonna coordinate getting a variety of comments from our residents. And yeah, so that'll, that'll be for their February city council meeting.
Yeah, and you know, the other issue there that I, I brought it up yesterday at the legislative meeting, but I know council member Michael, Christine Michael was, is concerned about the transit connections there. And the assumption that they'll use the holiday park and ride to service that development, which and Jean, I think I've heard you say a number of times, and maybe I might be wrong, but, but especially during the ski season, that parking right already overflows.
That's exactly right. And we, we have problems with parking on the street, which it makes some challenges with blind corners. So I, I was unaware before yesterday that there was an intention to use the existing lot. My understanding had been that the transit location was being developed as part of the development. So that, that's discouraging to me, given the challenges we already face.
Yeah, Dandy, I, I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna belabor this, but this is a really, really important issue to our city as this thing moves forward and I mean, that's what I heard, Dan. Did you hear the same? Was that kind of your, what you're hearing?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I, I, I think our, I think our legislators and senators are pretty unanimous in that they're very, very concerned about this. And I know that, I know Galen Benyon is, who's newly elected, who's representing the south end of Holliday as, as well as Senator Hashimoto. So yeah, so that's a big issue. And that'll definitely be a comment that will, will be made.
I think, I mean, as far as, as far as the city of Holliday goes, it's my feeling, I mean, my assumption. the city of Holliday goes, it's my feeling, I mean, my assumption kind of is the big issues for us really is that, is that um, connection that, that Dan's been talking about that's on the east side of the project that connects up to Wasatch Boulevard. Kind of where that elbow is, that's a big, big issue with the Canyon Cove residents. And then I think, you know, expressing our concerns about, you know, if we want these communities to be walkable, there's got to be transit connections. And so that there ought to be some kind of transit hub within that mixed use development, if that's the way they're going to push forward. So I think it's just important, important that we, you know, uh, you know, Dan remained really engaged in this, that, that Lenise get on board with it. Um, and you know, we get Dr. Perrin involved and we just stay involved with this as, as it kind of moves forward. So.
Yeah, and tha- and that would be, that would be a great uh, comment too for, for Gina to share with Tim. Reg- regarding the, the transit hub. In other words, so don't develop this, don't allow the development of this piece presuming that the Holliday park and ride is going to be used for, for the transit hub for your development.
Yeah, and then, you know, and, and along with that too, I believe we have an application in, I think if Holly's on, I think we have an application in with WFRC, a reapplication to look at Wasatch Boulevard from this development out to like thirty-third. They stopped for whatever reason at this development and didn't look at, you know, potential impacts. I think this is why we did it from Wasatch out. So Holly, is there a, uh, can you give us a quick update on that? Am I right in that, in that assumption that that application's in and what the status is?
Yes, that's correct. We did put in an application for the reasons you stated, Mayor. And in addition to that, the city of Mill Creek is a full project partner with us on that study. And they have a development that's currently planned for Wasatch Boulevard at thirty-nine hundred south. So there's potentially even more demands that will be put on that corridor. And as you know, the geographic limitations of Wasatch Boulevard makes it ever more important that we're being proactive and looking at that now. Knowing that there's going to be more traffic demands in the future.
Yeah, I know. And, and maybe this ties into what Paul says, and I'm just pulling this, just kind of bringing this up at this point, but we've had kind of pie in the sky discussions about a northbound off-ramp off of two fifteen onto forty-five hundred south at times. Is that, I mean, is that something that's a possibility that we could push or? I mean, ma- maybe that, this probably isn't the right time to talk about it, but maybe we should bring that up at some point and, and uh, look at that and see if, if that's something the city would still be interested in as, as part of maybe a future big money um, transportation budgeting item. Because right now you have to go clear down to, I think it's like thirty-eighth and then backtrack onto Wasatch Boulevard to get onto forty-fifth if you're going northbound. So.
And Mayor Dally?
Yeah.
Um, we did include that potential expansion of the interchange in the study request.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Holly.
You're welcome.
Gosh, I think, I think that's all I have. I know um, Sabrina, that I just emailed you to hoping maybe you can run the meetings this month. I'm not, not sure if you're going to be here next week and the week after. You're good? Okay. Um, all right, then I would take a, if I get a motion recess council into work meeting.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, move to uh, adjourn the city council meeting and reconvene in a work session.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second from Councilmember Gibbons. All in favor, say aye.
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 And Todd's already got his open and public meetings information up and ready to go.
Yeah, we're going to try something a little different, Mayor. You um, Council, you're aware you receive this training every year. Even though twenty-twenty felt like six years, it still feels like it was three weeks ago we gave the training. So um, what I have done, and I hope the tech all works. There's a quick little video uh, that's been produced by the state auditor's office that I've tried to embed in this presentation. I'm going to see if we can get it to take. So. Can you hear the sound? Do you have audio?
I don't think so.
Very faint.
That's a little better.
Before we continue, spend mind that this video is an overview. And exceptions may exist based on your entity type. So what's considered an open and public meeting? It's when a governing body majority needs to discuss or act upon government business. It includes the meetings sometimes referred to as workshops or executive sessions. Regular meetings, public hearings, electronic meetings, and emergency meetings are all open and public meetings. Open and public meetings don't include chants or social meetings. A public hearing is a type of open and public meeting where citizens have a reasonable opportunity to speak. Public hearings happen when a government adopts a budget or imposes or increases taxes or fees. An electronic meeting is a type of open and public meeting that's convened electronically, such as via phone or the internet. Remember, the governing body must adopt a resolution, rule, or ordinance allowing government electronic meetings. An open and public meeting may be closed to discuss any of the following: a person's character, competence, or health, security personnel, devices, or systems deployment, collective bargaining, litigation, purchase, sale, or lease of property, if an open discussion will prevent the entity from completing the transaction on the best terms, investigations of criminal misconduct, and private or protected information for the Utah Department Code, including trade secrets. Two-thirds of the governing body needs to vote yes to close a meeting. Quick math lesson, two divided by three equals sixty-six point seven percent. Let's say your governing body has five members. If three out of the five members vote yes, that equals sixty percent, which is not equal to or greater than sixty-six point seven percent. Which means you're one member short and instead move four out of five members to vote yes. During a closed meeting, a governing body can't introduce someone applying to fill an elected position, discuss filling a midterm vacancy or temporary absence, discuss the character, competence, or health of a person whose name was submitted for consideration to fill a midterm vacancy or temporary absence, or approve any ordinance, resolution, rule, regulation, contract, or appointment. If the closed meeting is discussing a person's character, competence, or health, or security personnel, devices, or systems deployment, no recording or minutes are required. However, the presiding member needs to sign a sworn written statement stating such. If the closed meeting is held for any other reason, a recording must be made. Emergency meetings may be held to discuss an urgent matter due to unforeseen circumstances. In order to hold a meeting, the best notice that's feasible is provided at the time, location, and topics to be considered. An attempt is made to contact all governing body members and the governing body majority approves the meeting. Entities that hold regular meetings need to provide notice at least annually of the year's meeting schedule. As always, the notice must include date, time, and place. For entities that don't hold regularly scheduled regular meetings, twenty-four hours' notice must be provided. All meetings, whether regularly scheduled in advance over the course of the year or scheduled as needed, must provide no less than twenty-four hours' notice of meeting agendas. If a public hearing is held, public notice requirements change. Make sure to distinguish between regular meeting notice requirements and public hearing notice requirements. For regular meetings, an entity is only required to notify a newspaper and doesn't need to pay to publish a notice. For public hearings, notice must be published in at least one issue of a newspaper. If a newspaper of general circulation isn't available, written notice is posted in three public places within the entity's boundaries. Regular meetings require twenty-four hours' notice. Public hearings require seven days' notice. For both regular meetings and public hearings, written notice must be posted at the principal office of the governing body. Or if no such office exists, at the building where the meeting will be held. Governing bodies must also provide notice of open and public meetings on the public notice website at publicnotice.utah.gov. By posting on the website and providing the email of the local newspaper, governing bodies can also meet the requirement to notify a newspaper. However, other requirements such as publishing in a newspaper shall apply. Typically, posting on a public notice website is done by the records officer, recorder, or clerk. However, it's the governing body's responsibility to ensure notice is provided. State Archives has prepared a training manual and guide for owners and posters, as well as training videos that can be accessed at their website at archives.utah.gov. If your entity is increasing a fee or undergoing truth and taxation for a property tax increase, be aware that there are additional notice and posting requirements. Public meeting agendas need to include reasonably specified topics to be considered, with each topic listed under a separate agenda item on the meeting agenda. The governing body may not consider a topic in an open meeting that wasn't on the agenda. If a new topic not on the agenda is raised by the public during an open meeting, the governing body may discuss the topic. However, final action may not be taken on the new topic during that meeting. Meeting minutes and an audio recording are required for all open meetings with limited exceptions. When an open or closed meeting is required to be recorded, it must be unedited and contain all portions of the meeting. Recordings of open meetings must be made available within three days. Every entity needs to establish procedures for the governing body's approval of minutes. Pending minutes are written minutes prepared in draft form and are subject to change before being approved by the governing body. Pending minutes must contain a clear indication, such as a draft or pending watermark, that the governing body hasn't yet approved the minutes and that they're subject to change. Pending minutes must be made available within thirty days. Approved minutes are written minutes of a meeting that have been approved by the governing body. Approved minutes are the official record of a meeting and must be made available within three business days. Whoever is responsible for taking the minutes during meetings, typically the records officer, recorder, or clerk, needs to be familiar with what OCM requires be contained in the minutes. When a governing body closes a meeting, the following must be publicly announced and entered into the minutes of the open meeting at which the closed meeting was approved. The reason or reasons for holding the closed meeting, the location where the closed meeting will be held, and the vote of each member of the governing body either for or against the motion to close the meeting. The recording and any minutes must include the date, time, and location of the meeting, the names of the governing body members present and absent, and the names of all others present except where disclosure would infringe on the confidentiality necessary to fulfill the original purpose of closing meeting. For more information, access our Local Government Resource Center at resources.auditor.utah.gov.
So there you go. That's our state auditor's version of the Open and Public Meetings Act training. I used to think I was efficient with it. I fall way behind compared to theirs. I'm not nearly as good with animations either. Uh, the other thing we wanted to do tonight is give you a brief update on the Ethics Act. Uh, from the time we did our last training, which was again nine months and the equivalent of six years ago, um, the Ethics Act has not really changed in any substantive way. Uh, we still have the same restrictions we've always had. Um, and the same purposes. They, they want to keep our business clean. Yeah, and it's great to work with a municipality that's been so vigilant about doing that. Commend all of you. Uh, again, there are prohibitions in the Ethics Act uh, against the use of your office for any kind of personal benefit. Um, the way that usually looks is payment for assistance of someone in a transaction with the city or an approval. Um, uh, having a business that's regulated by the city that might receive more preferential treatment. Uh, sometimes we do business with the city. Um, I'm not aware of any of those situations right now, but I've seen it happen before and it can be very troublesome. Or sometimes there can be investments creating conflicts. Uh, we don't see that very often in the municipal arena. Um, and I've not seen that from the city yet. Please be reminded that any offense of the Ethics Act is a criminal act and can be prosecuted accordingly. It is right now still a misdemeanor unless it involves um, an actual criminal act in addition to the violation of the Ethics Act. Uh, and the thing that you always need to keep in mind, a violation of the Ethics Act requires removal from office. It is not a discretionary thing with the city. That seat becomes vacant upon a finding that a violation has occurred. Uh, so the state act treats that very seriously. Um, our act generally is, I guess I would call it sort of a minimal restriction act. You can cure most uh, situations that would be viewed as a conflict of interest by disclosing your circumstance. You, you actually can legally assist someone in a transaction with the city as long as you disclose that uh, prior to entering into that sort of undertaking. You should know, even though the act generally only requires disclosure, we're going to be a little more aggressive, I guess I would say, in our advice to you if those circumstances ever arise. Um, my advice is always to avoid that to the extent you can. I've seen situations where council members, I thought, had to make a choice about whether they were going to enter the business arrangement or continue on a council. Um, I think that's the better course in most circumstances. And certainly when you have any kind of an involvement like that, if the matter is brought to a vote before the council, uh, it's critical that you step away. The Ethics Act isn't clear in its provisions on recusal. Uh, but as a matter of sort of constitutional bias analysis, if you've had any involvement in an application that comes before the council in any way, a matter that comes before the council, I think it's critical that you recuse yourself from the consideration of that matter. Um, there are times where we see uh, council members try to use their office to gain special privileges that may further their economic interest. You just can't do that. I think you're probably, most of you familiar with the situation. We had a council member up in Davis County who was borrowing the city's backhoe on the weekends and using it uh, to put in sprinkler systems for neighbors that he was being paid for. Can't do that. That just isn't okay. And then sometimes you're offered, I guess, swag goodies, benefits. Um, and, and candidly, they are offered to you as a result of your position on the council. Uh, I know there was a trend twelve or fifteen years ago, um, some, some people who are regularly before councils would offer tickets to their suite at the Jazz Games. Uh, those kinds of things look bad. And if, under the act, they can be a violation if the gift is worth more than fifty bucks. So there's no way you can't go to a Jazz game anymore on somebody else's dime if they're doing business with the city. Just keep those things in mind. Um, the occasional non-procurnary gift of less than fifty dollars is presumed under the act not to be a financial benefit that um, is presumed as a, a violation of the act. I still think it's wise to avoid it. Uh, it just makes sense to me to stay away from those things. These are things we've all talked about before. Uh, again, if, if for some reason you're helping someone in a consulting role in some way in business with the city, that has to be disclosed. It has to be done in a sworn statement, um, filed with the mayor, and then it has to be disclosed to the council in an open meeting. And if in fact you're doing it with, say, the Community Development Department, the supervisor in that department needs to also be advised of your work. Uh, and there's some specific uh, information that has to be in a disclosure. If you're in that situation, our strong suggestion would be to let our office know also so that we can assist and make sure the disclosure is full and complete. Again, I'm not aware of anything like this that has happened with this council in the time that I've been involved with the city. Um, there are some of us who from time to time have uh, our offices within the city. And our disclosure statement should indicate that. And I think that's kind of the high points. Um, one of the things that has happened in the last few years that I think has made I guess I would say in some ways a difference and has also sort of amped up the seriousness of ethics violations is in addition to the fact that a violation results in immediate disqualify- disqualification from office, the review of these situations in some cases is taken out of the city's hands. You can be referred to the Municipal Ethics Commission of the state now and a completely independent body, not your fellow council members, ends up investigating and making a determination on your conduct. That's a, a difficult thing to deal with. In my experience, that commission has been very, very good about sifting out um, what I guess I would call specious claims, those that can sometimes be retributive. Uh, as public officials, sometimes your decisions. Uh, as public officials, sometimes your decisions offend certain people. And that commission is, in my experience, been excellent in ferreting out those circumstances. From situations where there are real violations of the law. Um, but that circumstance where you could sort of count on. The camaraderie, the brother and sisterhood of fellow council members. Isn't really uh, any kind of solace or protection for you right now. Uh, the standard of proof is a knowing and a attentional one. You've all been trained now and. Um, I can see, I guess, in some circumstances where you could avoid that, but it's. Uh, it's unlikely that that would be much of a defense with an act, Ethics Act violation in my opinion. So that's all I have tonight on either the Open and Public Meetings Act or the Ethics Act. Are there any questions from anyone?
Hey Todd.
Yeah.
Will you talk about the form that needs to be filled out in their packets and returned to me?
We have provided in the packet of disclosure form. We try to do this every year. Um, and Stephanie, I don't have that in front. Stephanie, could you share that on your screen by chance? Do you have the ability to do that right now?
Yep, hold on, let me just pull it up.
You know, while she's pulling that up, um. It requires a notary. Um, so, or each count, there is, is council gonna have to have that notarized and then returned or?
My, my suggestion would be, um, if you have a way. To bring that into the city and sign it here. That would be the best. If that's difficult for you for any, any reason right now. The notary law actually allows a notary to whom you are known. And who knows your signature. To provide uh, an acknowledgement even if it's not signed in their presence. Um, and at this point, I have at least a little bit of a suspicion. That Stephanie, who is a notary, knows all of the council member's signatures. And if you were to drop that form off and she were just to simply call you on the phone and say, hey, I've got this form in front of me. Did you actually sign it? She could legally and appropriately notarize that.
Todd, Todd and Stephanie, here's a question. As I'm looking at this form. It looks like uh, we signed the form, but you only check the boxes if you, if there's a conflict and. So I mean, so, so you, so even if there's no conflict, you still need the form. I was looking at the section and. It said if there's a conflict, you need to, to file the form, but it didn't say you need to file the form if there's no conflict.
Yeah, technically, I don't think legally under the act, we are absolutely required if there's no conflict. I will tell you, it's more comfortable for the city if you've, if you file it, even if you don't check a box. Uh, and the reason is. Once or twice a year, there are folks who travel around the cities and ask for all the disclosure forms. Uh, and they make a big deal, even though it's not necessarily correct under the law, they make a big deal if a council member hasn't signed one. Uh, and so there's just, there's just a little more comfort from the city's perspective, even if you have no conflict to having those on file.
Am I hearing then that, that Stephanie would be okay if we signed this and? Do we mail it or, or email it in? Email a PDF of our si- signed document in? How, how do we, what's the logistics of it?
You could mail it in. I think that'd be great. I think she's, she's a little more comfortable if she has an original signature in her file. Stephanie, am I wrong about that?
No, that's correct. Yeah. So you can just drop it by or mail it. Either way.
Will do.
Yes, I do know all your signatures, so I'm comfortable doing that too.
Anything else? Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Todd. Appreciate it. Um, we are on to review of council policies. This is in your packets and this is Gina's, I believe. So I'm not sure Gina, what you need from us on this.
It is. Um, so given, given the fact that once a year we have the opportunity to take a look at the Open and Public Meetings Act and the Ethics Act. Um, and any potential conflicts, wanted to get in the habit of also reviewing council internal policies once a year as well. Um, it'll, some of the items in your internal policies, in addition to kind of spelling out how you as a council do business. Um, also provide some protection. Um. Yeah, and I just point to things like uh, section um, three, which um, provides some limitations on council travel. That's an area where um, in the last several years, um, some council members in other jurisdictions um, have found themselves in a bit of hot water. Um, so I'd point you to review that section, um, and then any other section. That you might wanna talk about. Um, council expenditure, um, section twelve also limits. Um, and sorry for going so fast, Stephanie. Um, section twelve also limits council expenditure without a prior approval. And section fourteen um, identifies that the financial audit that is done once a year is done. Um, on behalf of the council. So those auditors um, are not working for me, but are working for you. There are details spelled out about the council agenda process, um, and clarifies. As our ordinance does, that uh, the agenda setting process comes under the direction of the mayor. Um. And I thi- and then section twenty-two also outlines um, conflict of interest that we just went over. When we move on to the fraud assessment checklist, which we can do in one second. Um, I might suggest that the council consider adding uh, to their internal policies. If there are no questions or further discussion, I'm happy to move on to that, Mayor.
I have a question and then another question. Is twelve point two and twelve point three, is a thousand dollars an appropriate amount, amount for you? Do you find that to be overly restrictive or is it, is it appropriate?
So this is a, a, a section that I believe we spent some time on. I'm trying to remember whether it was last year or the year before. Um, in years prior, it was five hundred dollars and the council, um. In the last couple of years has increased it to a thousand dollars. Um, and I think there, the council direction at that time was a thousand dollars was as, as comfortable as they were, um. In setting this limit, um. I, I think it's, it's really a matter of what the council is comfortable with.
I, I'm just curious from your standpoint, whether you've found this to be, it's fine or this is, you know. Causes me more work than it's worth because it's too low. I'm just kinda interested to get your input on that. Is it no big deal?
Yeah, it hasn't been a big deal to me to this point.
Okay. Um, then my last, my last question is the very last. Sentence twenty-three point three. I just wanna know, I know this is kind of nitpicky, but. A majority vote of all council members in a regular council meeting shall be required and. For passage and adoption of any amendment, revision, or addition to these internal policies doesn't seem consistent with. I think how we normally operate. I mean, regardless of, of. How many council members we have or require a vote of four to pass. Uh, any ordinance as a resolution, so. Um, I, I just wonder if that's a, an appropriate language if you wanna make changes to.
So Mayor, my reading is that it is consistent with ordinance and, but maybe it's a, a matter of the placement of the phrase in a regular council meeting. Uh, because if we move that to the front of the sentence. In a, in a regular council meeting, comma, a majority of all council members. I don't think it is saying we need three or fewer. We could approve it with three.
I guess if you say, all council members assumes you have six and we're required a more, I guess that would be correct. But it would have to be that all council members were there. If you had four and you had a quorum. I mean, it could be construed to mean that if you got a majority of the quorum three, you could pass. Change, I mean, I, maybe it's too nitpicky. I don't know. It just seems. I know our council's kind of strange in terms of the way we operate and. How we approve. Um, I don't know, maybe I'm, maybe I'm just overthinking it.
Well, it reads that way, it reads that way to me, Mayor, as well, where. It makes it sound like, go ahead, Todd.
I've always been of the opinion that in holiday, we have to be able to count to four. And so, uh, I believe you would need.
That's my problem.
I would, I would need, I think you would need four votes. To revise these policies. And if you were at a meeting where there were only four members present. And three voted in favor and one voted against, it would be my opinion that that was not sufficient to amend these policies.
It would be a majority of the council members present.
Present.
It would be a majority of the council members present, but it still wouldn't be um, sufficient to pass, in my opinion. I think you've always gotta get to four votes in holiday.
Yeah, I know.
Does that language suffice then or no?
I agree with you too, but I think it should, I mean, is there anything wrong with specifying that it's four?
Does that language get us there?
Or does it leave us open for, for interpretation of words?
Yeah.
You can strike in a regular council meeting and. Take care of the problem.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Gina.
All right. So if there are no other questions on this, we can move on to the fraud assessment checklist. And um, I wanna thank all the council for completing the fraud assessment training on the state auditor's website. Um. That helped us um, obtain a score on um, this. New checklist um, that the state auditor is uh, requiring of all municipalities. It's also requiring it uh, of other governmental entities. So you may have completed the training for other boards you sit on. Um, I know uh, UPD and UFA boards have completed this. I'm assuming Wasatch Front um, has as well. Um, so, and, and it's part of an effort uh, by the state auditor to reduce um. Fraud, the, the fraudulent use of, of taxpayer dollars. Um, so you'll see at the top of this checklist uh, that we have scored a three thirty. Out of uh, three hundred and ninety-five points, which puts us in a low category. Um, for potential for fraud i- in our community. Um, I just highlight a couple of things, couple of areas where we were not able to score points. Um, we currently do not have a policy that um, provides a, a mechanism for reporting fraud and abuse. Either by our employees or um. Or on your behalf. Um, so that is, it, it's something we might consider adding both to um, your internal policies and then to the employee manual as well. We also don't, do not at this point have an, a written policy governing IT and computer security. And cash receiving and deposits. Um, with your permission, I, these are items I'd like to put on a, a, a big to-do list for this year to um, update. Uh, update our written policies. I'm not prepared at this point um, to propose language for um, IT and computer security. For example, or for cash or seeding and deposits. We also, as I think we've talked about before, do not have a licensed or certified expert um, in financial matters as part of our management team. Our um, outside financial consultant has a, a lot of um, financial experience. But has not completed his CPA and neither has Diane. Um, our entity does not have an internal audit function. Um, and we do not have a formal audit committee and um.
The audit committee could be pretty low hanging fruit, wouldn't it?
I, I completely agree with you. Um, for the last two or three years. Uh, the mayor and, and council member Fatheringham have acted as a, what I would consider an informal audit committee. Uh, meeting with our um. Auditor and reviewing, reviewing the financial audit in advance of presentation to the full council. Um, and developing a, a relationship with the auditor that is kind of separate from um, the management relationship. I think that is an easy change that we could make in the next couple of weeks um, to propose a, a, a more formal. Audit structure as part of your internal policies and uh, pick up twenty points. If, if the council's comfortable with that, um, what I'd suggest is that we work on some language and then bring this back to you at your next meeting for adoption.
Sounds good.
Um, based on your training and our review of the checklist, anything else uh, anyone wants to highlight or, or um, discuss this evening?
You know, the only thing that's, that sometimes caused me concern, I think I spoke to you about it before and, and it's on that list is, I know. We've been trying to transition to um. Credit cards and it's been a little bit more difficult maybe than what we had thought, but I know we still take, I see quite a bit of cash. Come across the front desk or used to and, and, and that's one of the items I noticed in the fraud checklist of. Um. Okay, I'm not looking at it, but somewhere in the middle there.
Cash receiving and deposits, yeah. Um, we have written policies for that, that process, cash receiving and deposits. However, the governing body has not adopted those policies, which is why we didn't uh, receive five points. I am um, uh, happy to report though that our, our receipt of cash is much, much less than it used to be. We have ta- have moved to pretty much exclusive use of credit cards for most permits. Um, which is where the bulk of our cash really was, was coming into the city, um, both cash and checks. Um, so I, I think that's great news and we're moving, we're hoping to complete that transition. Over the next year or so, I think business licenses are going to be our, our final um, piece of, of uh. Where we'll continue to receive um, cash um, for, for a while and, and cash mainly in the form of checks. Um, but we hope to move room rentals to a credit card basis. Um, as we began to um. Rent our rooms, um, hopefully in May or June.
Okay. All right, any, any more questions on the fraud assessment checklist for Gina? All right, um, Thirty-Nine Hundred South Reconstruction Update. Um, Gina, you're listed as the lead on this.
It is, yeah. Um, and I have, um, I would say just a, a very brief update on Thirty-Nine South. Um, Dominion Energy's work on Thirty-Nine South um, continues. Um, it's likely to be complete by the end of February. Uh, once that work is complete, uh, our joint project uh, with Mill Creek on reconstruction will begin. Um. Once that date uh, for completion of, of Dominion Energy's work becomes more certain and our schedule is finalized. I'll share all the information that I have with you. Um, I had thought would be a little farther along that that would be it um, by the end of January, um, but it doesn't look like it's going to be. Um, we do have a number of projects that are going to impact our residents in terms of getting around the city this year. Um, and that'll include pavement work on both I eighty and I two fifteen, the reconstruction of Thirty-Nine South. And major, our major intersections project on Highland Drive. So starting in mid-February or so, I'll, I'll try and plan on at least monthly updates um, to kind of review those, those um, project schedules. Um, and hopefully work with our public engagement folks um, on each of those projects to put together something that's a little more comprehensive. So people know what is happening where. Um, I think it's gonna be a challenging year, challenging summer to get around our city, but it, it's gonna be worth it once it's finished.
Gina, remind me how, what the, is that it, it's nine months, about nine months, did we say, once it started, nine or ten?
For Thirty-Nine South, yes. And the original schedule had anticipated some of the work being completed last year and. For 39th South, yes. And the original schedule had anticipated some of the work being completed last year and some this year. Since we weren't able to meet that original schedule, I don't recall how long that work is likely to continue into the fall. And, and that's what I'll bring back to you in a couple, hopefully six weeks or so.
That's great.
So Gina, do you have, have you hired a company to do this work now then? My understanding is that the contract has been awarded, yes. Great. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks Gina. Ongoing discussion on transitioning back. I, I just put this on here. I think we're all on the same page. I'm not sure we need to spend a lot of time. I think we are where we are. But I, if the council's got any questions or concerns or comments about how they think we ought to be handling, you know, this down the road, I, you know, I'd be, I think we'd all be happy to hear it. I think from a policy standpoint, where we're at right now is, is status quo that until, until the vaccine is substantially kind of out and, and becoming effective, we're, we're probably going to be operating the way we are. And maybe, maybe when we get further along, we might be able to come back in a hybrid mode with, with people that are more comfortable being here to start with or something like that. But I would think probably for the next three months or so, we're probably going to be doing business the way we're doing it right now. Gina, is that kind of where you think we're going to be as well?
I do. I am a little discouraged by our case count numbers over the last couple of days. It seemed like we were turning a corner and.
Today was rough.
But today was rough.
Today was rough. There's a lot, lot of spread out there right now. And I was on the board health meeting this morning and I won't, I won't give you the whole rundown. I will, I will say that one interesting piece of information they circulated that, that you might be curious to hear was that their opinion is they are ready from an infrastructure standpoint to deliver these vaccinations. The issue they've had is getting enough back, getting the vaccinations that they thought were coming. There was some talk about maybe Pfizer having issues with being, with having some production problems that they weren't producing the quantity they thought they were originally going to produce. But they were basically saying that they, they are putting all the vaccination in, in arms they can get right now. They just haven't got as much as they thought they were going to get, but that they are, they're, they're fairly confident that by the end of February, they will have all 75 and older individuals and those in front of them in the queue, at least with their first shot by the end of February. So that's kind of what they're looking at right now. I asked them if they, you know, when they were comfortable, if they could produce a simple template for us that showed in order of priority, who would be vaccinated and their best estimate on when they, they, when they think that would be done based on what they're hearing about when they're going to receive inventory, if that, if that makes any sense. And they're not comfortable putting that out yet because they really don't know and I totally get that. But that's kind of the latest information I got from the Salt Lake County Board of Health this morning. If that, if that's helpful to anybody.
Two of my sons got their first shot today. So that was encouraging.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah. And, and you know, my daughter and my son-in-law both got it as they're, they're in the medical profession. So, you know, they're starting to, to deliver the stuff in, in, you know, in the queue based on where you fit in their priority list. So I would think it would be, you know, medical professionals and nursing, you know, people in assisted living facilities, teachers, first responders, and then 75 and older. And then it'll start going from there is kind of, I think, the way they're, they're doing it. So anyway. But does anybody have any questions or concerns about kind of where we're at at this point or want to make any comments about it or? Okay. I won't belabor it then. Holiday backs to blue. We've covered the calendar, 14th, 21st. Sabrina will be running those meetings. And, and we've already covered the activities for next week. Have we, Stephanie, have we set our council, our preliminary council meetings for February?
We have February 4th, 4th, 11th and 18th.
Okay. Anybody know if they will be gone at any of those meetings at this point? Just so it's kind of on their radar?
I'm not going anywhere. I haven't been anywhere forever.
All right.
Hey, before we adjourn though, I, I, I wanted to just touch on something not of major concern, but it's about agenda item F. I mean, I love our holiday police department. They are awesome. Huge, huge, super fan of UPD. I'd just like to put in the back of your mind the, some messaging to be careful about. I mean, the slogan backs the blue. It's, it's, yeah, we support the blue, blah, 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 but, but it could be interpreted by some as being sort of, well, we back them versus who? You know, as if there's a conflict there and we're taking sides. I don't think that's what we mean, but sometimes those slogans can imply that and we should be careful. Also, there's that new sort of flag that's developing. That's the black and white flag with the blue stripe. And it's, it's origins seem to be perfectly fine, but it's just, we should monitor. It, it seems like it may be becoming the new Confederate flag among some popular portions of the population. And so use of that in our sense, I think just, I don't want to make a big deal of it, but I just think we should be conscious of it and be careful about it.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not offended by that. I get it. I totally get it. And I hope it doesn't come across that way because in holiday to include, you know, Chief Hoyle, we have really embraced the opportunity to engage in those conversations with the Black Lives Matters organization and other organizations within Unified Police to make sure our, our procedures and our policies did not promote any profiling or discrimination. And I certainly wouldn't want, you know, something that we're doing to be construed as taking a side. So I, I, I totally understand what you're saying, Paul. And I hope, I hope that, I mean, that was never part of how we wanted to title this and we, I think our position's been we shouldn't have to say, take sides. We can support our officers and we can acknowledge that there's been institutionalized issues in policing nationwide that we should be addressing. So, no, I, I'm not offended by that at all. And I certainly hope it's not.
And I do too. And I, cause I, cause I am no bigger fan of our police department and Chief Hoyle specifically. And our guys, they do a tremendous job. I think we handled, you know, the, the supporting that, the, the one Black Lives Matter rally we had in the, the city park that we did an excellent job there that, and our police department handled that excellently. And, and so, yeah, it's just the, the, the slogoning could be interpreted by some who, who aren't as familiar with our police department that, that it's sending that message. And like I said, I don't want to make this a bigger, any sort of a big deal, but rather just to raise an awareness of, we just need to be conscious, conscientious of the slogoning that could be interpreted in a way that we don't want. And, and also the symbols that we're currently using. They might be fine today, but tomorrow they, they might not, may not not be.
Yeah, I think it's a good point. We don't want to be, we don't want to be perceived as somebody who's taking a side on this.
Yeah, Mayor, if I, Mayor, if I could chime in, in 100% support of what Paul just said, we do not want anything that we do to be, to be perceived on either side of the political spectrum as being a political statement. And I think, I think it's important that Paul said that at this meeting and that, that we've expressed support of what Paul said, to put on the record that that was not the intent. It was not the intent that this, this be an us versus them thing. The messaging's gone out, so there's, there's really nothing we could do at this point about the messaging, but I agree with what Paul said. And I will say this from a personal standpoint as well. I spent a, I, I, I'm a real reader and I spent a lot of time this last year in sort of self-education and, and just as, just as sort of a personal comment, I read a, I read a book on redlining, dealing with zoning regulations and private property regulations that were grossly racist. And I got curious and I looked at my own subdivision plat. It was recorded back in the 1960s and it includes a racial exclusion clause, which is shocking to me. And, and so anyway, so I agree 100% with what Paul is saying. And, and I, I would like the record, I'll reflect my support of what Paul said on, on the, the minutes that that was never the intent that this be, this be a, an anti-black lives matter or, and us versus them sort of thing. So thank you, Paul, for raising that.
No, I think that, that's the last thing anybody wants at, at this particular point in time. And it was never the intention. And, and, and you know, if it comes up, I would like to know from who, so I can reach out to them and make sure they know that, 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 you know, if it, if it, we did something that was offensive, it was not intentional and that we're sorry because that's not, that was never part of this process. I, you know, when we started looking at it, I never really looked at the shield that way, I guess, but that might be, if it's construed that way, then, then we won't do it again. I mean, I just don't have the intention of going down that road at all.
Mayor, can I ask, can I ask a question? I, I echo Jeff or Paul's comments, both in support of our, our great officers in holiday and the great work they do and the work Chief Hoyle does. And also just the, you know, showing some caution about messaging and making sure we're clear on that. I was, I just was curious. Is this a, is this decision on this kind of back the blue initiative, is that something that a UPD thing? Or do they, do the individual jurisdictions that are covered by the UPD have additional input on how their, their municipalities participate?
This is totally a holiday generated event. It was, it was, you know, a discussion we had with the chamber and with Chief Hoyle back in September, October and Karen Pally and Amir Hassett, who had worked on this with us. And what, because we've always done either a breakfast or we've done a lunch or we've done something to memorialize Doug's. You know, the, we just didn't want that anniversary to slip by without recognizing, you know, his service and sacrifice to the community. And, and, you know, honoring his memory. And we were challenged with COVID and we couldn't do the breakfast. And, and so it's like, this is what we came up with. But it never, I mean, honestly, I have to say, it never occurred to me that that might come across as being something that might be, you know, perceived as somebody as, as being a take sides thing. And I would, I mean, those of you that know me, know I would never want that. And, and I would feel horribly if it was perceived that way and would want to make sure that if it does come up with somebody, you know, I'd want you to let me know so I can reach out to them and explain how, how it is we got here. And I mean, it never really occurred to me until Paul, Paul brought it up, to be honest with you, Paul. So you know, hopefully it won't be perceived that way. But if it is, you know, we'll, I'll certainly apologize and we'll make a change going forward. I don't know what will, I don't know what you guys will do next year with this, but I hope we continue to do something. It's just, this is what we came up with on the fly, I guess. As, as a way to honor, honor the, the January 17th date, the five-year date.
Thanks for hearing me out. Appreciate it.
Okay. I think we're at the end of our agenda then.
Presume there's no closed session?
I know of no closed session.
All right. I would move to adjourn.
We have a motion in second. Everybody have a great weekend. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
All the best, everybody.